Getting to order, please. For all who care to join me, let's stand and. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Holden is not here at this point. So I'd like to share the board norms. Debate, commentary, and discussion are healthy and open. Listening and speaking are equally important, and both should be done with respect and consideration. Focus is on students and our schools, not politics. Assume best intentions in all discussions. So we have an addendum that needs to be added to the consent agenda. Everyone should have it. If I could have a motion to add it to the.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, if I could have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The overall agenda first.
Oh, sorry, thank you. We have to approve the agenda first, and then we can approve the consent agenda. So, motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Now, motion for consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We're so ready for spring break.
Spring break, summer break.
Summer break. Summer break.
We'll have each one ready.
So, did we have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, public input. I believe we have a member, Susan Kur Savage.
Yeah.
If you would come up to the microphone, please.
So I'd just like to make a brief statement about the conditions in the schools lately on these really hot days. And I promise it's brief. My name is Susan Kur Savage. Last Tuesday, I had to pick up my child from school at 12:30. He couldn't take the heat. It was 87 degrees in his classroom. This situation is an immediate health and safety risk to our students and teachers. At these extremely high temperatures, heat exhaustion and even heat stroke become a possibility, especially for those with disabilities or underlying medical conditions. OSHA recommends that indoor temperatures be kept between 68 and 76 degrees. I've been told that the wiring won't support air conditioning at the intermediate school. However, the building we are in now, Longfellow, where district administrators work, is nearly 100 years older than the intermediate school, and it is apparently perfectly capable of supporting a dozen air conditioners. The administrators and the school board have an obligation and responsibility to maintain a safe environment in our school buildings. That obligation is not being met when children are being allowed to swelter in nearly 90-degree classrooms. The last 10 years have all been the hottest on record. According to the U.S. National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, this is not in dispute. I haven't even mentioned the added risk when you factor in humidity. There should be school cancellations or early dismissals, so-called "heat days", if the district is unable to provide safe, OSHA-compliant indoor temperatures. The school board and administrators need to make changes immediately, such as purchasing and installing portable air conditioners while figuring out a long-term solution. When school starts in September, this situation needs to be different, and provisions need to be made by the board and administration to keep our schools at safe temperatures.
I wouldn't move to refer this to the building committee.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. The topic has, will be discussed at the next building committee meeting. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. Amaya.
As we round out the year, we are excited to be awarding our B-R-I-S certificate to students who throughout the year consistently followed our four expectations. R-I-S would like to thank everyone for their partnership throughout this past school year. We especially want to thank Allison Williams, Tony Polino, Patty Harris, and Mary Zullo as they head off into retirement. Their service to the students in our community, who collectively over 85 years, touched the lives of countless students and families. We want to wish everyone a happy and healthy summer and encourage everyone to read, challenge themselves with math facts, limit social media, and to be kind to one another over the summer. May and June at Northeast was a special time as we close out this awesome school year with many activities to celebrate students' hard work. We were delighted to host the mayor as our guest speaker for our final school-wide Paws Character Trait Assembly for the trait of being a positive leader. First graders had a wonderful visit on their grade-level field trip, and second graders learned so much on their May field trip. Kindergarteners also enjoyed all of the wonderful programs happening at Stafford on their recent visit. As a school, we had so much fun at our Fun Day last week. From obstacle courses to class-versus-class tug-of-war to the cooling effect of the fire truck shower. Thank you to RHS and RMS, Yes Plan students who partnered with us this year. Mr. Sherry and Ms. Sampson High School students spent a day landscaping and cleaning out our trail network around the pond at Northeast. Ms. Adams Middle School students were great role models with our second graders for a Toy Story-themed STEAM unit, and Ms. Farkas's students who read to our students. This month, we will bid farewell to some team members who have admirably served our district and students. We thank Lucy, Daven, Carol Carini, Ellie Mack, and Sharon Napolitano for their time, dedication, and hard work on behalf of Northeast Primary School. In my first year of being principal at Northeast, there was support in every direction I turned. I'm so grateful. Thank you to our Northeast PTC families and extended community for supporting us this school year, and have a wonderful summer. We've ended the year with great success. We had so many events, both within and outside our community. I'd like to thank families for their continued support at Northwest Primary School. At Northwest, we show respect. We treat others with kindness. We are always safe, and we reach for the stars. The students have exemplified this motto. Just a reminder, this summer, we have our Tapestry programs in full force. If you have a student going to first or second and would like them to join, please contact the school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen.
I'd just like to recognize all of the teachers and staff who are retiring this year. They've certainly earned their retirement, and I wish them good luck in their next endeavors.
Here, here.
So we were going to recognize Holden, so maybe we could wait on that in case he shows up. I'm not sure.
Why don't we wait on that? Can we still welcome?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. Sorry, I heard, I thought I heard the door open, so I looked.
Sure, no problem.
Yeah, please, yeah.
Do you?
I think Greg Schellinger is going to.
Okay.
If she's here. Thank you. I am pleased to introduce our newest, and I promised her she didn't have to say anything, so. I am pleased to introduce the newest school board representative, Amelia Shelton. Amelia is a rising junior who has served in student government for each of her high school years, first as class secretary and then as a class senator. She is a student leader who was invited to attend the Vermont Youth Athletic Leadership Conference and the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Seminar. Speaking of co-curriculars, she is a member of the Environmental Club, the Rock Climbing Club, and the Art Club. She's an outstanding scholar, as evidenced by her leadership of the Spanish National Honor Society and the Tri-M Music Honor Society. She's been a member of both band and jazz band as a flautist and piano player. She has traveled to Germany with the student, with the school exchange trip, and interestingly, next week, she will be in Zimbabwe, Africa, to participate in a humanitarian aid youth trip in which she will build extra classrooms for local schools. Ladies and gentlemen, I am honored to present to you Amelia Shelton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to next year. Okay, shall we move? Keep, just see if Holden?
Yeah.
Just hold that, and we'll just, if he comes, we'll.
If he doesn't, we'll talk to the camera. He's watching somewhere.
All right, then if you're out there. So we have a Tapestry and Epic report. Aye.
I'm with you, I'm ready for summer.
Do you mind? That would be great. Just want to make sure he's okay, too. Like, if he's turned it somewhere, we'll go get him. Thank you. You got one?
I don't have any music this time. But I did want to first thank you for having me back. I'm going to share some data with you tonight, and then in the fall, we'll have our first set of data against our benchmarks. We're compiling those, the first set of data that we'll compare to last year's benchmarks under the new federal reporting now. So we need a little more time on that. But I did want to highlight, in the "I can" category that you hear from me all the time, that we've had a tremendous success this year. And a couple of things to highlight. One is the collaboration with the community that we do, bringing people in to provide programming. The library, roadside chapel, came in and ran Tuesdays for us at middle school Epic. We work with the Mint very closely and many, many other private businesses and community nonprofits. We also had, as the district has seen, a number of folks move into our community that need a little bit of extra support navigating things, whether it's registration for our programs, finding us, applying for subsidy support. And we had one of our staff, Amanda Gurney from Northwest, identify this and say, "We need to pull together and create a support for them." So she held a meeting and invited families and invited community partners working with those families, and had a very successful evening of folks filling out forms, supporting each other, families to families. People would say, "Oh, let me come help you with that." It was amazing. So I really wanted to give a shout out, and it's another way that we're responsive to the kids, but also to the families, and that's something that we haven't had much opportunity to talk about and share. So I wanted to showcase that for you on Slide 1. Ran across this recently, we're all familiar with it, and I think it really does speak to the essence of the work that we're doing. Alice, this is impossible, Mad Hatter, only if you believe that. We don't, as you know, believe anything's impossible. We are working to make sure we are engaging youth in many, many ways to learn, to broaden their horizons, and really make sure that they have purpose. A great example of this is a story that I was told recently about a student that was with us last summer that has lost a parent and struggled a bit. Really connected with one of our high school employees during the summer program, just really felt safe and comfortable with him, and shared that, and said, you know, "I'm not coming back after this because you won't be here." And he cultivated that conversation, the high school student, to really explain, "It's bigger than him, and it's the whole program. Everybody's here looking out for you and wants the very best for you. Moving to the middle school this year, and now he's going to be at Epic this summer." So, you know, really just hanging on, engaging, and creating that sense of belonging to help him rise above and say, "I can." I thought that was a great story. It really touched me when I was told about it. And what a great illustration of our portrait of the graduate on many different levels. So wanted to share that with you as well. The next slide, we have some process measures. I'm not going to read all of these, you can read them. But I think it illustrates, I know it illustrates, success. So we came out of COVID. I came here during COVID. And I'm a consciously optimistic person. I was a little nervous as we were coming out of COVID. Were we really going to be able to get that wave going? Part of that clearly is getting Northeast back on the stage and having kids enrolled there. But if you just look at these two years, I didn't want to get too historical, of '22, '23 to '23, '24, and the growth that's happened, it's impressive. And what we're looking at this summer, I unfortunately have to kick myself because I was telling everybody we have plenty of staff for the summer. Guess what? We don't. The numbers are just out of sight. Unfortunately, we have wait lists at both R-I-S, and you're sitting down, that's good, the middle school Epic program. We have 80 kids. So despite hiring 21 new people just for summer and having 94% of our school year staff transition to summer, which is huge, the only ones we lost were people that were moving and going on to different things. 73 staff is not enough for what we have found for our enrollments, and they're coming in even today, fast and furious. So we're working that through and trying to make sure that we can meet as much of the demand as possible, strategizing and really trying to get creative. But we also want to be safe. So we're going to be looking at numbers this summer that we have not seen since I've been here, and it's going to be pretty amazing. So I am anxious to share more of that with you in the fall. Achievements, this is going to look like a long list. I didn't put it all up at once because I didn't want you to go, "Oh, my gosh." And these are just the highlights. So imagine there's more behind this, but I do want to hit some of these. So we reopened Northeast Tapestry in January. It's been a bit of a slow start, but it's gaining ground, and it's working really well. We hired our first full-time dedicated site coordinator, so they don't have another job but this, at Northeast. We're going to be hiring another one by the end of summer. So we're working that model through, which was part of the grant proposal that we submitted last year and had approved. We have been working on trauma-informed practices, and Jenna Whitehorn, in her amazing presentation of that, did a fabulous job with different groups of people over multiple weeks, and people were, they walked away saying, "This has changed my life." So we're so thankful for that. Guess what? Lifeguards are back. This year, we finally have lifeguards back. That's been a struggle. It's taken us three years to get to that, and it's taken a lot of work and a lot of creative enterprise. So the programs can go back to state parks now this summer, and they're so excited. So that's one of our "whows" for this summer is that we have lifeguards and we can go back to the state parks. Another thing we wove into our grant was getting more teachers involved in delivering programming to kids. So we put out solicitations, invitations, to teachers to come and do enrichment programs with us. Four to six weeks, start, finish, you're done. We had three take us up on it this year, and they went so, so well. And it was, you know, it's a fresh way for the kids to see the teacher, the teacher to see the kids. It was really fun to watch how that worked. So we have more this summer, and we already have some lined up for next year. Student-led, we talked a lot last June and probably in the fall about all the work we were doing to get our staff to really think about student leadership, student voice, student agency, and it worked. One great example is at the high school, a student came forward and said, "I'd really love to do a jewelry-making club. Can I do that?" What do we say? "I can." "Yes, you can." So she did. And there were, at last count, about a dozen kids participating in that, having a blast, just, you know, cabressing with each other, making stuff. This summer, they're going to come down and share that with middle school kids and teach them how to make their own jewelry. So, you know, really simple, but super important. Connections. Tutoring is rejoining Tapestry and Epic. Tutoring did rejoin for the middle school in the spring and the summer across the other programs, and that's being built by some fabulous people that are helping support that, thank goodness. Right now, we have, last I knew, about 70 kids in Northeast and R-I-S. I'm waiting for the number from Northwest and the middle school. Some of those are also with us for camp during the summer, but not the majority. So those are new faces for us, which is good. We have Professional Development Day going into summer. We bring all of our staff from all of our programs together and do a full day of professional development. It's supposed to be kind of make-and-take stuff that they can use practically in program immediately. This year, we got lucky, super lucky. Life is good, we all know their T-shirts. They have a nonprofit arm, Playmaker. And we contacted them, and they're going to come and do that Professional Development Day for us with all of our staff, up to 80 people. So we're right about there. They really have, it's hands-on, get down on the ground, roll around in it. How do you use play to engage kids in learning and in character building? So that's a really exciting development for us. It's a multi-tier thing, so if it goes well, which we hope it does, we will likely invite them back and continue with the path that they have. Tuesdays at RMS, I mentioned, that we had a community partner come in and save the day and ran that program from January through last week, and they did an amazing job. I was there one day. I've told this story, but not to you guys. Standing in the doorway of the classroom, they were moving in from being in other spaces. I couldn't get out of the way. The kids were like rolling over me, trying to get into the room. It was like a tidal wave. It was, and they were all laughing, and they couldn't wait to get in there and see what today's activity was going to be. So that was really something to have them come in and fresh faces rejuvenate what was going on. This summer, as you know, past years in the summer, we've had the rising sixth graders move to Epic, seventh grade. This year, we instituted rising third graders coming into R-I-S so that they start to get the lay of the land and feel more comfortable in their space and get to know faces. So that's happening. Lastly, this summer, we took a little different spin on Epic, and we're blending the two programs. As I'm sure I've said to you all in the past, we look at this as a continuum, K-12. So I, we're trying to remove those barriers, even if they're just mental models. So we're focusing on seventh through 10th graders, but would obviously welcome anybody. As I already mentioned, we have a wait list for that program, so pretty exciting stuff. So, we're going into summer. I always say, "What are we going to do to wow them?" We have the numbers. We have done great things, and we're doing more. One summer will not be the same as the last. We will not repeat and just take our plan and do it again the next year. So every summer is a whole new experience. Some things that are successful can come back. Not forever, until they've lived their life. This year, some of the new things in returning, but for good reason. Farm collaboration, we have a local farm that raises goats. They're going to bring the goats and let the kids play with the goats. They're little goats, apparently. I haven't met them yet. Do you know who I'm talking about? Because I haven't met them.
No, no, I don't.
You're smiling, so I thought you might.
I just love goats. Because they're like hot. Yeah, I have, yeah. I watch the reels about goats. That's why I'm smiling, because I really love goats. They're really funny.
Make sure you get an invitation.
When he's stressed out, go watch goats. Because they're really, they're really great. They're really great, I swear.
They're going to do some activities with the kids, too. They're going to make their own bug spray, and they're going to make bee baths. Did you know bees bathe? I did not, but they do. So they're going to make bee baths.
Watch bee reels.
So much to learn.
Yeah, come on down, we got it all. Last year, I told you about horseback riding. That was such a great success that we have two days a week of horseback riding, and more kids are going to be able to participate in it. So that was amazing. The Stables was just so happy with how that all went, and they said, "Can we do more?" And we said, "Of course, we can." Fitness boxing. I don't even know what that is, but sure. Tutoring, we talked about. Ice skating at Spartan Arena. So we had Rahah reach out and say, "Hey, we have the ice. Do you guys want to skate? It's hot, it's summer, yes." Jewelry club and lifeguards, I already talked about. So we have some pretty cool things. So now what do we do? How do we keep topping the last thing? We're working on that. We have Leadership Launchpad, which will be a rising seventh through high school program to expose kids to what it is to be employed, how to get a job. First, they'll do it through mentoring in the program, and then, as they get into high school, we'll actually help with that kind of thing. I know they have other resources, but the more the merrier because you can't get enough. Summer enrichment week, I can't tell you anything about that. We need the grant to be approved, but we're going to add a week this year in August. That will be a very special week. That's a brand-new thing, it's a big deal. Our second full-time dedicated site coordinator, I mentioned. We've also been, in the last year, talking about, and will start implementing now that we will have a couple of full-time site coordinators, some programming over school breaks. Not guaranteeing what breaks or, you know, what populations to serve. It'll be less numbers than we normally do, but we need to have something, so we're working on that. Next summer, we had hoped it would be this summer. I'm sure you remember me talking about that. We would be serving kindergartners. The legislation didn't change in time, but we'll figure out a way to do it next year creatively, if not absolutely, you know, with the legislation behind us. High school athletes. So we do a really good job of this at the middle school, targeting athletes to come in and participate in things while they're waiting for their practice, they need to get their homework done. "Oh, hey, we're playing this game over here, or we're doing this activity." We have kind of lost some of that traction at the high school. I know it existed in the past, so we're going to work on building that back in. It's just a benefit to anybody and, you know, save some time and energy. I know we all run around like idiots between things, but we don't need our kids doing that all the time. I have one, I know. And then we have the Epic Grant due next January for the next five years. So we're starting to think about what can we do next in that arena. That's going to be a very big deal for us. We will have, on that note, we will have a site visit this summer and another one during the school year for our Tapestry grant because we're going into year two of our five-year grant now. So when we have that, I would love to send an invitation and invite one or two of you to join in those observations and conversations. So I put that out there because I always have to come to you with some sort of an ask. So that's being planned sometime in July. Not quite sure the date yet. The state needs to let us know when it fits in their schedule, so that's coming, too. Any questions? Yes, ma'am?
The site coordinator, what location are you going to be hiring that for?
R-I-S. That is our biggest program, that will always be our biggest program. That will always be our biggest program, and we need that to be our flagship.
The summer enrichment, you're looking to add that for this summer, maybe, if you get the grant?
Yes. We've gotten preapproval, but we can't uncap it yet.
And so that would extend it, like it would go closer to the start of school?
It'll be one more week at the end. It'll be the week of the twelfth to the sixteenth for a target population.
Got it.
And not a huge number of kids, given the facility we'll be using.
And really, to kind of get those kids ready?
Yep.
Yeah, got it. All right, thank you. Yeah, it sounds great.
Yeah, it's going to be very cool.
Yeah, yeah. Fingers crossed for the grant, for sure.
Oh, I'm not concerned. I just don't want to get the cart before the horse.
Got it. Good, good.
But summer is a big deal to us. This summer will cost us over $200,000 just for summer. It's a big deal. Any other questions? Good work.
Yeah, thank you. So we're going to backtrack for just a second. Do you want to start, June?
Sure. I'll just say a couple words to Holden. Holden, thanks for being here. We, you have a busy week this week? I don't know. I don't know who scheduled a board meeting on graduation week. Or graduation on a board meeting week.
Us, whole Disney thing last week.
Oh, yeah.
Still a little, little foggy. We're here now.
You're here. Good to have you here. So on behalf of the board, I wanted to thank you, in the district, thank you for your service and stepping up. This is a hard job. It's hard to come to the table and, you know, listen to all our presentations and participate and, you know, get involved in all the things that we have to work on to help make the district better. And listening to you speak about your perspective from, you know, the student point of view and how you're perceiving things, how you experience school, was really, really helpful. There was one time in particular, I was like, wow, that was really, really, really thoughtful. And so thanks for contributing all that you did. You're going to Saint Mike's next year, Saint Michael's? Good, good. So congratulations on that. We have a gift for you, and I'm glad you're going to Saint Michael's, because it's a certificate to the bookstore at Saint Michael's, so. You're not going there. So we have that, and we have a nice plaque for you, and you get to take your name tag home. So that's, how about that? Yeah, that's really good. For your desk at Saint Michael's.
Yes, thanks.
I just want to, I want to echo Bill's comments and thank you for your diligence and hard work in putting together your reports. They were always really thorough and informative, and I, we all really appreciate that, and we all really appreciate you sharing your thoughts and opinions during some particularly difficult, shall we say, difficult, board meetings. So just really want to thank you for that, because it made a huge difference. You made a huge difference on our board. Thank you.
Thank you, Holden.
Thank you.
Congratulations on graduating.
Yes, and college.
Steps ahead. I asked the other day, and they said, as of today. So I think it's Greg 169? Am I right? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Is it okay if I do mine? I feel really bad if I.
Yeah, okay, so we have, Holden is going to share his report.
Just because I missed that, is that okay? All right. At Stafford Technical Center, on Friday, May 31st, we recognized our ninety graduating seniors. Stafford alum Hannah Poljessik shared her path from the Natural Resources and Forestry Program to Paul Smith College, and her work now is a veterinarian technologist or FET-Tech. She reminded the students that it is okay if they do not know their exact plan right now, but that their experience at Stafford will help guide them along the way. We were proud to award over $28,000 in scholarships to students during the ceremony as well. State and national licensing exams have been happening in many of our programs the past couple of weeks. We are happy to report that we had a 100% pass rate for the following exams. Health Careers I, Vermont Licensed Nursing Assistant Written and Practical Exam. Health Careers II, National Certified Medical Assistance Exam. Cosmetology II, Vermont State Cosmetology Board Written and Practical Exam. Our Construction Technology Program is putting the finishing touches on a cabin they build at the Lake St. Catherine State Park. In the coming weeks, you will be able to reserve this cabin that was built with timber harvested and milled by our Natural Resources and Forestry Program. And at Rutland High School, Rutland High School is in the midst of YES Plan 2024. School-year courses have concluded, and students are now studying topics such as wetlands and estuaries, local food and businesses, community service, and land navigation. YES Plan wraps up tomorrow with our open house. As a part of YES Plan, the band and jazz ensemble traveled to Disney's Imagination Campus to perform with and for bands from all around the country. AP Art students wrapped up their year with an art show at the Hub in downtown Rutland. Students presented to an appreciative audience of friends and family. And finally, students who signed up for place internships during YES Plan have been wowing their mentor, wowing their mentors. Students this year have been placed all over Rutland County, including at the Rutland Airport, the Boys and Girls Club, and Rutland Regional Medical Center, where some students were able to assist volunteers and scrub in during surgery. RMS had a very successful end of the year. We celebrated all of our accomplishments with a field day last week. We had lawn games at RMS, a school-wide barbecue, and spent time at White School. YES Plan wrapped up today. Our teachers offered some amazing courses for our students, including jewelry-making, where students researched and learned about jewelry from different cultures and a variety of techniques. Our careers in law enforcement class met with parole officers, canine trainers, police officers, and fishing game wardens. Do Good Rutland traveled all around Rutland County, volunteering at local service agencies such as Brock, Parent-Child Center, and Habitat for Humanity. We are so grateful that our students get to have these opportunities. Tomorrow, we will say goodbye to our eighth graders with a clapout. We are excited to see all of the great things they will do at RHS, and just as excited to welcome our rising seventh graders.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The clapouts are awesome. Like I was just looking at, I have a video from my daughter where she had hers. It was just so much fun, just watching, like they're all, they're, oh, yeah. Give it a chance, go to the school when they're doing the clapout. It was pretty fun.
More fun than watching goats?
That's a tough call.
More emotional.
It still is fun, yeah.
Do the clapout and go watch goats.
There you go.
Good day.
Okay, thank you. And now we have our technology report.
So thank you for having us this evening. I'm Patricia Agner, and I serve as your Director of Technology, and I'm joined here by my colleague.
I'm Dan Roswell. I'm the Senior Systems Administrator here.
We also have joining us this evening Laura Appeliano, our esteemed coach from Northeast, as well as Gail Campo Piano, our esteemed coach from Northwest, and Justine Ruland and Kristy Cludy are principals. So what I'd love to do is I would love to have you hold questions, if you could, until after they present, because we're going to be talking about things that are, Dan and I talk about things that are interesting, like differently interesting, and you know.
Interesting to us.
Interesting to us. We think it's interesting. So we want to talk about three big ideas at Rutland City Public Schools, and we want to talk about your child's school. So I'm just going to talk about this here, and Dan's going to share some information, too, but Dan and I have been doing this together for fourteen years, and this is my twenty-second year as a technology director in Vermont, Middlebury, and then here. So one of the things we're really aware of is that we provide a very different environment here than some other school districts. Like Dan and I have been out visiting schools, and we'll say, where's the server room? And they say, it's in the bathroom next to the toilet. And we're like, what? But isn't there water in the bathroom? Yeah, yeah, there's water in the bathroom. And then we hear from colleagues who tell us, you know, our technology for our kids is terrible. We have mismatched and broken machines. Things don't work all the time. So, you know, one of the things, one of our goals is to make sure that technology is seamless and reliable across the system. So this year, we had the benefit of ASR funds and also E-Rate funds and local funds in our purchasing. So Dan's going to talk a little bit about what we did with technology this year.
So one of our biggest projects is we bought all the equipment necessary for teachers to have the standardized experience. So every teacher has the same setup in each room, so that if they have to move rooms or if they're changing different classrooms, everybody will have the same access, the same equipment. So it makes it easier for them, streamlines the operations, more efficient. The other thing we did is we used E-Rate, which is a separate federal fund, to buy wireless points, their state-of-the-art wireless points, which we'll be installing this coming summer. We'll have some of the best wireless out there. We'll make access and speeds a lot better than what we currently have. We're looking forward to getting that up there. And also have improved security. We'll talk about that in the next slide as well. And we'll have less interference. There's so many devices in the schools right now that it's quite a challenge just to keep the network up and running and reduce the amount of interference with a number of computers and phones and tablets in every room, so. And then we also embarked on a project to formalize our visitor management system. So when parents, or parents and staff come into the building, there'll be a whole different setup for visitors. There'll be automated badging and lookups and equipment at the entranceway that they'll go through, and that should hopefully ease the process with that as well.
And we take a lot of pride in our work. If you look at that picture up there, Forrest Emo, who's on our team, he designed a different background for every school building. So you walk in and you see the TVs or the smart TVs, and, you know, right away, you know, you have that impression, you know, professionalism, and also that it's customized for each building. So that's an artificial intelligence picture. I think Forrest slipped that in, didn't he?
We'll blame Forrest.
So that was actually generated with AI. But one of the things that keeps us up at night is security redundancy and our employee vigilance with technology. So technology landscape keeps changing, and it's kind of scary. I mean, it's even scary to us. Last year, we developed a cybersecurity plan that was shared across the state as a helpful tool for other school districts, and we hear about these terrible moments in schools pertaining to cyber attacks. And so one of our goals is to just keep our end-users up to date and maintain a high level of security. So we train people. In fact, I had a school administrator here this evening say, you got me. You got me. You fished me today. I was waiting for an email, and you fished me. So we were laughing about it when I came in. But we actually, we go out and we fish our employees, and we see, you know, what they'll open or click on or put their credentials in. What's really cool about us is that in the education industry, we have a very low susceptibility for employees to click and/or enter their data. Like, our data looks really good, which is nice. So Dan's going to talk a little bit about how we protect and how we're prepared and how we've used those ASR and E-Rate and local funds to do this this year.
So this year, we've implemented multi-factor authentication. It's that really annoying thing that texts you your phone. That setup for teachers, the first time they get a new computer, they have to authenticate it and make sure that it's actually them logging in. We have had several instances where people have attempted to log in with credentials from different machines, and that's been blocked, so that has been effective this year. Our HVAC control system server is getting an upgrade this year as well. We're getting out some new hardware, keep it isolated from everything. You know, keeping infrastructure like door control and HVAC and things like that is, you know, keeping those secure is pretty important. Our, the endpoint protection we bought last year, we're continuing to use that. We've had very effective results with it. It's been a great product for us, and we appreciate the fact that the budget's been able to support that, keep us safe that way. Our backups and software and hardware are all top-notch at the moment, and we've done a very good job with your help over the past few years of keeping our equipment up to date. So we're not running old things. I mean, that's a typical way to get hacked, is run the old computer sitting in the corner that no one knows about or replaces. So we've been really good about keeping the lifecycle up to date, keeping our battery backups, our power supplies, all of our equipment in the server rooms up to date as well.
We've got really good inventory software, too, so we can see where things are, which is nice, so. So then the last thing, this is the third thing. I said I'd talk about three things. We love staying ahead of the curve, and we love to innovate and we love to educate, and that's why we're here, right? So again, the educational landscape is changing constantly. When I look at the products that are offered to us to work with teachers and kids, and particularly the advent of AI, things are moving really fast, so. So we have to stay on top of it, and we actually enjoy staying on top of it, which is good. So we're working very hard to monitor trends and opportunities and make sure that we're constantly improving. So Dan's going to talk a little bit about how we do that.
Robots, always.
Robots.
It's always a conversation about robots. So we've been using technology curriculum. It's unlocked our students' potential and creativity with hands-on projects. So some of our teachers will be attending a graduate-level course, become a Lego League Club at the intermediate school. Last year, there were twenty-seven teams in the state. This year, there were sixty. There were enough teams that we needed to run an event, and it ran at Rutland High School and one up north, and we had thirty teams show up, and it was a, it was a great time. Next year, they're hoping to have seventy or eighty teams, maybe even a hundred. So we're hoping to have some Rutland teams show up to that event and perform and compete and meet a lot of friends, so. That's our next, our next big goal for that. Patricia taught, is teaching a Canva class that has sold out, and.
We had twenty-one employees that signed up for it. And in education, it's artificial intelligence as well as a variety of tools that make learning engaging for kids, so. So, yeah, so we're doing that. It's a graduate-level class for teachers internally, just for our teachers. Yeah. That's awesome. And then the other thing that we have done, which is really interesting, is we've upgraded some of the equipment in the maker spaces. So we're excited about that. The kids are learning how to use laser cutters. RIS is wild about 3D printing, and the kids just go crazy for it. And it's that whole design piece. And, you know, we see it in production, because Dan and the IT team actually build things that are used by maintenance, by us, with 3D printing, with the lasers, so. So it's really a beneficial knowledge base for our kids. And we've been investing in steam and stream with the little kids, because you had reading. So we're going to talk about that a little bit this evening, and that's going to segue us into some of the innovative work that's happening in kindergarten through two. So I'd love to invite our principals and our teachers up to share some information about the work they've been doing, and your videos are right here. And if you have questions, I'm.
I'm also going to pass around our yearbook. You can take a look at that.
The robot yearbook.
I'll run the mouse.
Art.
So these were made by second graders.
Oh, wow.
Out of cardboard boxes and paper towels.
Amazing.
I don't know how Betty put that in there.
They're both right here, so.
Good evening. I'm Kristy Cludy, principal at Northwest.
Hello, everyone. Nice to see you all.
Justine Ruland, principal at Northeast.
Laura Appeliano, STEAM coach at Northeast.
Gail Campo Piano. We call it Stream, because we added in the reading aspect at Northwest.
Well, we're all really excited to have the opportunity to speak with you about STEAM tonight. I know Kristy and I, at several board meetings, have talked with you about some of the things happening, but we're excited to have the people who make it happen, our STEAM coaches, Laura and Gail, to really share about what's been happening behind the scenes, the wonderful work they put in every single day at both of our schools as coaches, to provide opportunities for students, but also to help teach our teachers how to make the most of STEAM. So I'm excited for them to share with you tonight.
Who'd like to start? You guys want to talk about what is it? What does it look like? It looks a little bit different in each building, so maybe, Gail, would you like to just talk about Northwest and how it looks? We, we're fortunate, we have a space, so when you walk into the building, we have a Stream Room. We have lots of different things set up, and Gail has been in charge of coordinating that for the students and for the staff all year, so you can just talk about what that looks like for Northwest.
Sure. So as Kristy said, we have a dedicated classroom that staff can go in and out of and have access to as often as they would like to use it, just, you know, utilizing a schedule, Google Doc.
to as often as they would like to use it, just, you know, utilizing a schedule, Google Doc to reserve it in the room. It has rotated themes every couple months or weeks, kind of based on calendar or schedule. And it kind of gets revamped. So I've created different kind of kits and activities that go along with the theme. And you'll see that in our video.
And what do you have here?
And so these were one of the pieces of work that my second grade students made. We read a book called The Folk of the Faraway Tree, which is about, it's kind of just a magical story about children who go into a tree in the forest that has a whole community of magical people that live in it and then travel to these other kind of fairy tale-esque lands. And they were so inspired by it that they, along with some guidance, created these versions of the treehouse out of a cardboard box, a lot of masking tape, some Elmer's glue, flour, water, paper towels, just all recycled materials. And then added in other things. We joked that we had to stop the project. It was ongoing because we would have literally had working water and like.
It was amazing. Like, it was over the top.
It was really exciting. And when I said that I was presenting and I said, "What would you like, you know, for me to tell this big group of adults that are really interested in our maker space?" Unanimously, they said, "The treehouses." They really loved it. And I think our maker space just light, they light up when they're in there. They, you know, if it's on our schedule, they know it's this day, we're going to the maker space. They look forward to it. I've seen students kind of change their thinking and say, like this gum, you know, container from a pack of gum. I'm going to, can I save that to bring that down to the maker space? So they're looking at trash in a way that they can reuse it to solve some sort of a problem.
And that's one thing. So Gail puts out different problems. So any, we have a Google Calendar, classrooms can sign up. And there's a board that has different problems on it. And the students have to demonstrate their understanding through projects. So the creativity is amazing. While they do a lot of fun things, they're connected to the standards. So that's the really important, it's like the kids don't know what they're learning, you know, and it just carries over into the whole environment. And then there's, you'll see in our video, we have some other projects, but the maple, we did a maple syrup project. Well, I say we, I had nothing to do with it except for admire it. But we have a woman that has worked at the school for years and she comes in and volunteers for everything. And she set up a sugar shack for the kids. Like, it was physically a shack and she brought in this like electrical stove that had like a flame. Then they brought in, you know, the sap and they're boiling it or over-boiling it.
Sorry.
But just like the hands-on of Vermont, you know, it's really impressive. But it's just starting to take off. At first, teachers were a little more reserved because they don't have time, right? There's no time to teach this, there's no time. However, when you see the impact, you know, it's a great way to get in your science and social studies that we don't have time to teach. But the impact that it has on the students is forever and lasting. And so just the more we engage the students, you know, the better off we'll be, definitely.
Seems like I want to show you a movie?
Sure.
And then we'll talk about Northeast.
Sure. I think you just did that thing. I don't know what you do as I. Let's see.
I think you just did that thing. I don't know what you do as I.
Let's see.
I think we need steam boxes for our meeting.
We can arrange that.
So there's different color codes on the back of the markers and they can either go faster, slow down, it can do like a U-turn. So the, I think the best thing is to give them a blank piece of paper with the markers and just kind of have them create their own. And they love them. So if you did blue, red, blue, your OzoBot would do a U-turn. Or if you did blue, green, red, nitro boost.
That's awesome.
You're going to need to borrow these.
Retreat.
Like, it's just, you know, to get that mind thinking about, you know, progression and steps. Yeah, it's really cool.
Yeah, that's amazing.
I suddenly want to go back to school.
Come join us.
Anytime, for sure.
Do you have any questions for us?
Do you sleep?
As lately, when I'm at the school here.
Not so much. Next week, maybe.
We dream about it, though.
I would just like to commend you on the outstanding program. I mean, I always continue to be amazed at the things that Brother Public Schools offer. It's just, and continually being improved upon. So I congratulate all of you.
Agreed.
I think our district too excels in the technology area.
Definitely.
I agree. It's something that we have as an asset compared to other places.
And the technology is just getting better and better. I mean, the fact that you can draw with a marker and move a robot.
Yeah.
That you can take this little thing that looks like a bee and press a forward arrow and a side would, and that, you know, make a path for the robot to follow and really engage kids' brains in critical thinking and problem solving and multi-step thinking. It's just amazing. And they just are like psyched that, "Look, I have the control of this robot," you know.
And that's their world. Like, their use of video games and, you know, the traditional classroom setting, it does not work for kids. That's whether we want to get back to the good old days or what, that's not the reality. So how are we going to engage them where they're at? Right?
Just watching the technology, just because I was, my senior, my youngest is graduating and just like watching the difference in the last, like, Smartboards were just a thing when she, they were at Northeast or West. So like, they'll get it now. Everybody has their own laptops. They're very ever-changing. It's been 13 years ago.
And it's so important to teach them how to use this appropriately because it's our world, you know.
Otherwise, they're going to find their own ways.
And if we can embrace it in a kindergarten student, then we're going to have another student that's, you know, doing all the amazing things that we heard of, the high school student this year. So.
For sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us so much.
Our second graders are running through the halls, if you want to observe that, after they clock out the middle school kids. That's what they get to do tomorrow, they get to run through the halls. Their parents come, it's a pretty big deal.
A long time. They would like to be a police officer, so you see. They also thought that it was really important to show inclusivity, so they put, for Pride Month, they put the rainbow. They also are obsessed with the Boston Bruins. So that's on the other side. So that was a fun activity and the middle schoolers were able to kind of help facilitate that. And then you'll see in our video, one of the favorite activities is coding with the Ozobots. So I just grabbed one. And we can pass it around if you want. There's like a little coding trail and it will literally move along the line. And this is definitely a favorite activity of the students. If you want to look at that, you just have to place it on the line.
Show it to our movie?
Yeah. And then we also have a video of the great things happening at Northeast.
I think we need stain boxes for me.
We can arrange that.
We know some people.
Have these things.
What exactly does the coding do?
So there's different color codes on the back of the markers. And they can either go faster, slow down, it can do like a U-turn. So the, I think the best thing is to give them a blank piece of paper with the markers and just kind of have them create their own. And they love them. So if you did blue, red, blue, your Ozobot would do a U-turn. Or if you did blue, green, red, nitro boost.
That's awesome.
You're gonna need to borrow these.
Retreat to coding. Like it's just, you know, to get that mind thinking about, you know, progression and steps. Yeah, it's really cool. Yeah.
Yeah, that's amazing. I suddenly want to go back to school.
Come join us.
Anytime, sure.
Do you have any questions for us?
Do you sleep?
As lately, when I'm at the school here.
Next week, maybe.
We dream about it though.
We dream about it.
I would just like to commend you on the outstanding program. I mean, I always continue to be amazed at the things that Rutland Public Schools offer. It's just, and continually being improved upon. So I congratulate all of you.
Agreed.
I think our district too excels in the technology area.
Definitely.
Something that we have as an asset compared to other places.
And the technology is just getting better and better. I mean, the fact that you can draw with a marker and move a robot. That you can take this little thing that looks like a bee and press a forward arrow and a sideward, and that, you know, make a path for the robot to follow and really engage kids' brains in critical thinking and problem solving and multi-step thinking. It's just amazing and they just are like psyched that, look, I have the control of this robot. You know?
And that's their world, like their use of video games and, you know, the traditional classroom setting that does not work for kids. That's whether we want to get back to the good old days or what, that's not the reality. So how are we going to engage them where they're at? Right?
Just watching the technology, just because I was my senior, my youngest is graduating and just like watching the difference in the last, like, smart boards were just a thing when she, they were at Northeast or West. So like, they'll get it now. Everybody has their own laptops. They're like, very ever-changing.
Yeah.
It's been 13 years ago.
And it's so important to teach them how to use this appropriately because it's this is our world, you know?
Yeah, they'll find their own ways.
And if we can embrace it in a kindergarten student, then we're going to have another student that's, you know, doing all the amazing things that we heard of, the high school student this year. So.
For sure.
For sure. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Our second graders are running through the halls, if you want to observe that, after they clap out the middle school kids. That's what they get to do tomorrow. They get to run through the halls. Their parents come. It's a pretty big deal.
Oh my gosh, they're gonna use the back of that one.
Wow.
Yeah, no, they're all, they're amazing.
Okay, so. I believe this is our final recovery report. Yeah. Sorry. Yeah, where am I?
Go to the left. One more finger.
Oh, perfect.
Slide share again?
Right here.
On the bar.
This is like the one thing I don't do.
Think you need one of those coders.
I know. I can do, I can make the presentation. It's perfect. Thank you. So I'm Abby Bradowski. I'm the recovery coordinator for the district. And this is our final presentation, which is a culmination of three years of recovery projects and initiatives. So this is going to focus on ESR two and three, which are, there were three phases of the ESR federal funding. And ESR two and three are more what I work with. And they totaled about 16.2 million dollars and some change. So what I've done is kind of gone through these big picture areas, these big buckets, and talked about each of them pulling together those two funding streams. So I think about recovery as a bridge, which makes sense, right? The work that we've done in these areas, construction, student-staff support, program and curriculum, technology and security, and then recovery and strategic planning have evolved over the course of these three years. But the grants were always intended to respond to, prevent, and prepare for current and future pandemics. So everything we've done had to be toward that goal. The largest single investment that we made in a bunch of projects as a big bucket was construction. And so that's around 7.4 million dollars. And obviously that is, is a way to prevent and help prepare for future pandemics if necessary. And some of these projects I think of as legacy projects. So when we're looking at HVAC in every building, building in the district and talking about how we actually can improve air quality for our students, that's something that will be around for a very long time. Our outdoor classroom projects are similar. These are 50-year structures. These are not temporary housing units. These are something that we have invested in to make sure that they're learning spaces for students for a long time. So in these areas, a super special and important thanks to maintenance custodians, bus aides, who did a tremendous amount of an extra layer of work because there was so much to do. We had remarkable vendors all the way through, great many of them local, who made it possible to do this amount of work in this wide-ranging, comprehensive way over a short period of time. And we had a lot of impacted staff and students and a really overly flexible group of principals who continued to say yes, even though there was going to be a lot happening in their buildings. So these spaces are, they're healthier and they're thriving. We really looked at targeted areas in every, every time we tried to figure out a place to impact. It was targeted to support student programming while diversifying and making our spaces more nimble and flexible and useful and safe. So the Rutland Intermediate School Auditorium was renovated partly because you can put people in there in a socially-distanced manner and it's indoors and it serves two buildings. It also had an asbestos problem, right? So we're trying to make these really targeted investments so that we will be able to use that space in a wide variety of ways over time. We have the Rutland Middle School Outdoor Classroom that's happening now. So you see the drawings there. And if you look out the top floor in the back of the school, if you're up there, it's a really cool view of this patio. And there's no student-centered space for Rutland Middle School at all, until now. So it's really exciting. Also, the Rutland Intermediate School Kitchen, these are some of our new neighbors. Bring people together for, for food and fun. And these are things that we get to do over time that don't just impact us because we had a rough spot during the pandemic, but we'll be able to, to grow and thrive over time. Allen Street Campus has done a really great job. And I have a little video that's got put on Peg TV. Hopefully it loads up. We're gonna watch the first part. I'm gonna dismiss. I don't need that. And it really shows the interaction between Allen Street, the outdoor classroom, and their pollinator garden that they're working on.
Hello, I'm Mr. Scott. Coming from live, from Allen Street Campus. Today, I'm going to tell you something about what we are making. We have pollinators. We have made a fair, we are going to make a paradise for pollinators. We have sixty. We have sixty trees out there. Or more. So when they grow up, we are able to make apples. And these will go from the flowers to the apple tree. And make it so the apple tree can grow the apples. We want to build an outdoor classroom at Allen Street Campus. So we can be outside. And the outside noises and the cold, fresh air out there will calm our nerves and senses and help us speak.
That's pretty great. He's a great, we're gonna, we're gonna just stick with that because it's a long video. But if you have a chance, do go in. It's delightful. And the students each did different discussion bits about the outdoor classroom. And so here, the middle slide, you can see what it looks like completed. We're just planting. I know Scott's crew planted a bunch of plants. To the left, we have the Northwest Basketball Court, which is the only paved space that students have. And it will be painted with pickleball for the little ones as well. And our Northeast Outdoor Classroom. PPLC was the opening slide. So these structures are done for the most part, and they're really nice. And they are a wonderful third space option for our community. And they did take three years to plan and execute. So they're, they're something we should be proud of with ESR. The next big bucket was really student and staff support. And there's a little bit cut off because of the formatting. And this was downloaded, kind of cut some stuff off. But we, I think about the student-staff support as the people and the time that we've invested in. And so we have teacher leaders who met over the course of three years to really look at what we were doing as a district with recovery planning, how they could provide feedback to that plan and implement parts of it in their own buildings, work on curriculum with the curriculum coach that was hired through ESR. We have a lot of counseling staff, interventionists, engagement stipends, things like that. But we know that hiring was difficult for a few years throughout this bridging period. And so ESR was a really important, mindful way to manage the hiring over, over that couple of years. And so we did a really good job being able to keep some people in district and in permanent positions and, and be planning for that. So it was great. And one of the roles that's not on there too is a business office role that got cut off. And you can see here, I love this picture because it, we think about, and it can be easy to overlook how important the environment and the interaction between the environment is with learning. But here's Ed Decken with his Restorative Circle at RIS. And that's some new flooring. And those spaces feel very different now that they have that sort of hardwood, homey, warm feeling. And changing that feel can contribute to a sense of well-being and it can change very much the way a school feels when you go into it. And so some schools had a lot of work done that was pretty powerful and does impact learning over time. The next sort of bucket was program and curriculum support, and that was 1.7 million. So if you take the second bucket, the last one we just looked at, and this one, they're about 6.9 together. So it's a pretty big investment. In this areas, I think about it as the items and the professional development and the programs. So we have Stafford did some training with Marzano, Rutland High School, School Within a School. We had a lot of different types of programs that needed to be initiated. Some will be sustained, other things will change over time. The professional development itself, sorry about that. The formatting is driving me crazy, by the way, as an English teacher, because that's not how I did it. But there was a lot of different types of PD that happened. And it's a great example of bridging. So what we needed immediately during the pandemic, like Xern Math, became illustrative and became something different, which was post-pandemic. And we had to be nimble about what we were doing for students in order to respond in the moment and then how to build what we want to do over the next however many years. So we were able to prepare. We were able to respond in this way. Some of the professional development was district-wide. And some of it was needs based, based on what teachers and buildings were requesting. So there was also some diversity there for PD. This is a picture of, again, RIS went down to Texas a few years ago. We've sent other staff to conferences for restorative work. And there was a lot of other areas that we tackled. And this is part of our way to respond to the needs of students. The needs of students have changed, you know? School's different and students have different needs. So our staff have just done an incredible job being able to change how they teach and how they interact on a very basic level. And that's not easy for teachers. So it's, it's something we should be really proud of and something that's been really impressive. I'm also really proud that we have three vans, seven vans. Between ARP ESR and ARP IDEA, we've updated our fleet. Little-known fact, the first car I ever drove was a 79 Ford Econoline van. My dad's a van guy. So these are providing us opportunities to access outdoor learning, work-based learning, transportation for vulnerable students, and just a lot of very needed flexibility for our programs and our staff. Allen Street had a couple of other really interesting installations. We have a climbing playground over there that was ESR-funded. We redid a basketball court. They have a sound engineering and sci, and science studio, which is absolutely remarkable. And they have a culture there where students can really use that space to make and create music, video, audio. And it's just cool. Like you walk in there and you feel cool, which I always appreciate because high school kids want to feel cool. Another really enormous part of what ESR was able to support was the curriculum work that we did. So this is just one overview document. But there is a huge database of curriculum that this district now has that's clear to teachers. So if you have someone new coming in or somebody moving classes or doing something different, you don't have to wonder what you're teaching. And groups can use it. So we have this, these overview documents, standards docs, scope and sequence, unit plans, navigators. And I want to just give a really big special thanks to Lorraine Bargma Metz and Sue Tannen and Dana Johnson, who were leading that effort throughout the district and then K through eight math and ELA. So really, really good work. And there's a huge product that's kind of invisible, but it's there and it's going to pay off over time. We also did some lovely technology and security upgrades. There's Dan Roswell, this server. One of the things that surprised me when I was kind of compiling this from the two grants was the number of tools that we supported, so Edge Climber, Zoom, G Suite, Tableau, all these different pieces that are making it much more agile to teach in ways that are effective. And also these systems like CrowdStrike, so keeping our system safe, having radios and wayfinding and security cameras. We have safer schools as a result of the work that we've done. So we have 50 or more air purifiers in big spaces that were actually, the state has its own amount of ESR money and they were like, how many, you want some air purifiers? And so we got those a few times. We bought go-bags. We have AEDs. The two-way radio project is really exciting. But even today, I was working in Rutland High School on the wayfinding. So when you walk into the building at some point, you will be able to get somewhere that you want to go. And you may not have to ask somebody. That's really exciting to me. And we've been doing that work for a while. So again, a huge thanks, the IT department has been a major partner in this work. Patricia's team, but Dan did such a great, great job on the servers. Forrest is a radio guru and he loves it. And there's a twinkle in his eye when he gets to talk about it. Ben Trudeau did the, it really headed up a lot of that hybrid classroom stuff. So they worked really well with the maintenance crew and did just incredible number of installations during the school year. And the principal said, sure, we can get a class out of there and bring another one in. And it was pretty amazing. And the last little bit was recovery and strategic planning. You got me for three years, which was great. It was fun for me. But this is really your preparation for the next five years. And so Patel for Kids, Your Portrait of a Graduate, this final piece of the whole picture really allowed the district to thoughtfully bridge the pandemic with the next few years and enabled us to use the grant to benefit everyone over even a longer period of time. We could have made investments that were just done, right? Done, moving on. But that's not what we chose to do. So there is some work coming up in the summer and beyond. I chose this picture because one of the things that will happen in HVAC over the summer, we have to finish a lot of work in a bunch of buildings. But the air, you can see on the left, the air duct at Allen Street was supposed to be cleaned. And when they went in to clean it, it obviously was a mess and needed to be actually replaced. And that will happen in the course of a big construction project. So on the right, you see the new gym air handler sitting down in the very dry basement, which is also something that ESR helped pay for. So eventually we have these upgrades that are really important. I do think, just speaking to the community member who was here earlier, one upgrade that we're excited about is, is air conditioning in the RIS library. So we were updating that. And as we, we do these big systems, there may be opportunities. Also, the Stafford's Engineering and STEM Lab, that will have air conditioning as well, which is good for the, the equipment. So these projects that are going to continue through the summer and even beyond the September 30th end of ESR will make Rutland City Schools a better place for students and staff to be. And that's, that's pretty exciting. So I definitely need from folks, a survey. We are just adjusting the grant one final time. So this is a little short, but kind of long, short link that you can type into your computer. If you would just email me, I'm happy to send you the link. It will. Yeah, yeah. It will close tomorrow at noon, just because we've had it open for a week. But I can definitely make sure you can get it digitally if you don't have it. And that's helpful because we, we adjust the grant to take into account, you know, the bits of peace and bits of money that were in different projects that were under-invested and kind of pull them together and try to make sure that we can be nimble and finish up. So that's the last step for that. And then Rob can change it in the GMS. And finally, just a huge thanks, we had, oh, go back, go back. Capital S, four K D.
Want to send it to me and I can send it to them?
Yeah, yeah. I did send it to Sheri, but it might not have gone out. So I'll send it to you. So just while you guys are typing in there, a really big thanks because we had recovery and construction teams that just made it a priority for three years to meet every week and do this work. And Rob led this in a way that was really insightful. I mean, really insightful. So some of the things that we were able to do were because of his leadership. And then Glenn just kept saying yes to everything. He's got another big summer.
He won't make that mistake.
But as I was pulling together this information in this list, it was a little bit overwhelming because it was really good work. It was a short amount of time and it was a great, it was a great kick.
I can't believe it's number years.
So, questions?
I, I feel like some of us were here when you first started. And it was just this list of, of, I guess I feel very proud that, of the responsible approach the district took right from the very beginning. I feel like Rob and you, you both came to the table with, very early on. And I feel proud that they put you in this spot.
It was a good move.
To keep everything rolling and, and making sure that we stayed on top of where our needs were, where, so the money was responsibly spent and we could get as much done as we possibly could with the funds that we had to make the most maximum impact. So I feel like we're really lucky that we had you in that spot as long, you know, with Rob's tutelage and, and all the things you guys pulled together over this whole period of time. And now we're here and you're asking for the middle miner, you know, what's, you just kept coming to us for, for engagement. And I just think that it was just so responsibly done, the whole, from beginning to the end. And here we are so better off with all the improvements that we've been able to realize. So I thank you for your time and just being so responsible and managing that whole process. That was big.
I was looking at, like, there's during budget season, there was some districts of stuff that, I'm like, why didn't they go for ESR funds for that, like stuff, like a lot of need back? I saw that with, in a couple of different budgets. I'm like, why didn't they do this? And why didn't they do that? So kudos to hiring Abby to facilitate this from the top.
Well, we've heard from the state, like our, I'll call it comprehensive, like just trying to do something everywhere in as many ways as you can is a lot different than really good strategies like Fairhaven chose to build a middle school wing, right? With ESR money and local funds. And that's a great choice. I mean, that's a legacy choice. So you can do it a lot of different ways. And I don't think that other ones are necessarily good or So you can do it a lot of different ways. And I don't think that other ones are necessarily good or bad. This one was more complex, you know? There's definitely a lot more going on.
But I think, as you said, it's benefited everyone in the district.
It's benefited every building. Yeah.
Everybody got a piece of what they needed and then some. I feel like, and at the same time, like, I feel good about how we responsibly spent the money. And we put everything to good use and it's going to benefit the kids directly. So I think it's just amazing what you've done.
So if this ever happens again, Abby, you have to come back.
I'd be delighted.
But Abby, you have to come back and retire, unretired too.
Rob, did you want to say something?
Yeah, so I, I was going to try to channel my inner Bill Olson. I heard Bill Olson yesterday at the country club talking about Bill Walton. You know, how Bill Walton talked about making the choice, you know? And I thought, how do I, how do I make this leap to try to be like Bill Olson? And I thought, Bo Jackson. Or Bo Jackson. And I thought of like, when I was like in college or slightly after college, you had all these commercials like, "Bo knows this, Bo knows that, Bo knows football, Bo knows baseball." And they show Bo driving a Formula One. And then there's this thing where he's playing guitar like Bo Diddley. Bo says, "I guess you do know Diddley." And so I was thinking of that and people were asking. It's like, when Abby started, you know, Bill had the wise decision to say, like, "We need somebody to do this extra work. You can't bring $17 million into an organization and not have some additional management." So we bring on Abby and, you know, so Abby's like, "Well, what am I going to do? Go figure it out. It's going to be great. It'll be a great adventure. You'll, you'll love it. Just do this job." And so Abby became Bo Jackson. And so I was talking with Abby today about what were some of the positives of this adventure. And because Abby is a ravenous learner, she describes learning. And so I thought about like, like Bo Jackson, like Abby can do project management, construction meetings, purchase agreements, bids, bid waivers, negotiating with feds, negotiating with salesmen who want to give you bacon so you spend a million dollars.
He might bring me bacon.
Bacon. And so I thought about all these things and categorizing and leading and facilitating groups and, and skillfully interacting with people at different levels, all who want something, right? And I thought, ah, Abby's Bo Jackson.
Bro knows.
That's right. Bro knows. So I thought, if we, if we had the good fortune to get the right person in the right place in the right seat at the right time, we did it. And, you know, while Abby's very kind in handing over accolades, the true, the true facilitation of the entire project rested right there. And we all went, "Yeah, you're doing great. Keep going." So thanks to Abby.
I would like to say thank you to both of you and acknowledge your departure. And it is a real loss for the district. You have made an incredible difference in the face of our school system. And that will live on for years and years and years. And Portrait of a Gra- I mean, you, you have, you both together headed up so many changes that are going to benefit our community, not just our schools, but our whole community. And so from the bottom of my heart, thank you. That makes me so sad. Bill?
It's tough to go last again. The only thing I'd add to that, besides all those nice things that you said, which are all true, that's millions of dollars, millions of dollars that are not coming out of the local taxpayer. So, and those are, those are things that we would have had to do eventually. Those spaces, as you can see, needed to be, needed help. So that's, that's a lot of money that is going to be saved in the future. I'm just, I'm going to be brief. You already stole one of my things that I was going to say. So I'm going to be briefer than I was going to be.
Go ahead, say it again.
More brief. I'll say it again. But just a little brief hiring update, just so you know where we're at. We have done really well this spring, finding very well-qualified candidates to fill our openings. And I, for one, am very excited to have new folks coming into our schools. And, you know, I get to, I get to meet all of them. Really interesting people, some, some great catches, I would say. So we're looking forward to that. I just want to remind you, you saw in the consent agenda, our practice is through the summer when we're doing hirings, I'll, for professional staff, I'll email you a description of the person. If you have questions or comments you want to give to me, let me know immediately. Otherwise, we'd say, okay, we're good and we're going to hire that person. Otherwise, the system wouldn't work, right? Because we, you're not going to ratify until the end of August. So we consider them hired if we don't hear from you. So that's the process that's been going on for years. And just like an update on current openings, there's a couple of new openings because of, you know, one person transitioning to another spot within the district. So here's where we're at. With RHS, we have a science and math, science opening, a math opening. With Stafford, we have a health careers opening and an engineering opening. RMS has a counseling position and a math interventionist position. Our IS has one elementary position left. They had a few openings and they've got it down to one. Northwest has a counseling, counseling opening. Allen Street has one special ed opening. And Northeast is the winner. They're complete. So we're not in a bad position, but we still have some work to do. So we'll keep you updated on that. And those are the, that's where we're currently at. I think we might have an opportunity to fill a couple of those very soon. So we're in even a better position. At your places tonight, you saw the yearbook for the class of 2024. So that is yours to keep, or if you'd like to take a look at it, check it out and donate it back. We always can find good homes for those if someone, someone needs one that wasn't able to purchase one. So check it out. That represents the class of 2024 and the great four years they had. What I was going to say, Karen, I also wanted to thank the board members for attending the retirement reception that we had yesterday. It was, we had a pretty full, full room. We had the Rollin High Jazz Band. They were unbelievable.
Really good.
Really good. And it was a lot of fun. It was great to see people from, some retirees from, from years back, literally decades back, come to attend this. So it's a nice tradition. And it was really kind of you, folks who were able to attend recently or yesterday, to support those people who made the choice to spend their careers and lend their talents to our, our kids and our district and our, and our colleagues. So thank you for helping support that. That's, that's really meaningful. I wanted to remind you that graduation is this week? Okay, this week. Thursday night at the Spartan Arena, 6:00 PM. Kathy said, "What time should I get there?" If you want to come to this, we'd love to have you. I'd try to get there pretty early. Like, I would, I, if I had my choice, would drive around 5:00 o'clock and get there and avoid the traffic because it gets crowded getting into that spot. But we'd love to have you attend and sit with the faculty, the little section that we have for that. I was thinking about you, Holden. I was thinking about your graduating class. Now, tell me if I'm right, you were in eighth grade when the pandemic started, right?
Yeah, halfway eighth grade.
Eighth grade, spring of eighth grade, right? Crazy. And, you know, so, so this, this class of 2024 had eighth grade remote. And then in ninth grade, they come to the high school and they're dealing, you know, we, we, there was no vaccines. So we're trying to figure out how to, how to manage that and all that went into that. Remember that, Justine? She lived it. She lived it every moment of the day. And, and so this class of 2024, as well as all the other folks, but coming to high school in that fall and then having to get through all those obstacles and fight through that. And here you are at the finish line. It's a real credit to, to your class and your classmates for, for being so successful in overcoming those obstacles. So congratulations to your class. I wanted to say congratulations to the families of, of the kids graduating. And thanks to the community and to our staff and our staff around the county because we have kids from all over coming to Rollin High School. And I also wanted to thank the board for supporting, supporting our kids. We, we had a long road too, and we helped these guys get there. So thank you for supporting the kids and directing resources and providing leadership to make sure we did a good job with that. So I think that was all I was going to say, to keep it short. That's it.
Okay, moving on to committee reports. Building.
Okay. The building committee met on June 4th at 5:00 PM. Members present were Bossy Franco, Lennox Levens, President Solso. Also present was Superintendent Olson, Director Glenn Scott, and Controller Tim Smith. And items covered were the ESSER Security Camera RFP, which was in our packet that we passed. Mr. Scott explained to us, that's weird to say, sorry, Glenn Scott explained to us that the camera, the cameras are getting updated. They're updating some old analog cameras. They're updating digital cameras. Everything's going to be up today and new. And also noted was a reduction in our licensing costs due to the fact that some cameras will have multi-angles so that you can place like three cameras with one camera. So you only have to pay for that license instead of three. So it's a, you know, it's a good move going forward. And that's covered with ESSER. So yay that. We also covered the RMS PCB testing. We're waiting for results. They already did the testing. And they're working on organizing the data to get it back to us. Results are expected July 2024. We talked about the action levels, what happens next, allowable amounts and different things like that. So we're just waiting on that information. We talked about Allen Street HVAC update. We, we saw the air handler in the picture there. We had a lovely conversation about that. And Glenn is very excited about his new air handler. And we were talking about getting a picture of it framed for his office because it's very exciting. But honestly, it is going to be a really big, because you saw the condition of the pipes. So they're running whole new duct system and making sure that the air that's coming in is going to be healthy for the kids. Allen Street Outdoor Campus Classroom is beautiful. We saw a picture of it on there. We saw pictures of all the boulders. They had to move out of the dirt. There was a lot of extra work just to get the rocks out of the dirt and then what to do with the rocks once they're out of the dirt. And, but it's looking really good over there. So everybody should go check that out. Also, the Rutland Middle School Campus, which I stopped by on Sunday with my kid. And we walked up the hill to go look at the, they've graded it out and there's like gravel in there. And they got the pavers ready and they got the, I think the post for the umbrellas is what I was looking at. It's really cool. You should go check it out because it's really cool. And that's going to be a huge, beautiful space for the kids to be able to use and for the public to be able to use. So. And then we talked about the summer plan. Glenn reviewed summer work plans with us, including, including the RH, RHS, Lord have mercy, Stormwater Product Project is in the permitting process. That might go out till next summer because of the process might take longer. And you've got to get contractors real early. So, but we have plenty of time to get it done. The deadline is 2027, so we have plenty of time to get it done. So nobody's stressing over that at all. The alumni field construction starts on June 24th, 2024. And there will be, we talked about having signing up so that the people who are regular walkers and everything know that the, it's going to get, the construction's going to go on and they're not going to be able to use it. So. And we talked about work at the Stafford Technical Center, wayfinding, installation of smart TVs and fire alarm RIS. So nobody's going on vacation this summer. We adjourned at 5:43 and the next meeting is September 3rd at 5:00. Now, on a personal note, I was glad to hear Abby and Rob talk about all the ESSER stuff. It was nice to get it highlighted and that we could thank them. But I would just like to acknowledge the amount of work that's been done on our buildings over the past several years with ESSER funding and all the extra construction, major upgrades to maintain and improve our aging buildings, upgrades that help keep our kids safe, comfortable, and healthy. And much of this was done through ESSER funding, which comes with timelines, extra paperwork, and specifications that further complicate already complicated construction products and lining up vendors and all that sort of stuff. Glenn and his team have been working so hard to get it done despite crazy weather events, unforeseen events that crashed into timelines. Yes, that was a joke. Thank you. We are lucky to have Glenn in his direction in our school district. And we are lucky to have his team that work with him that get the work done. And I just wanted to say thank you and good luck this summer.
Sarah, do you have the dates that the track is going to be closed?
Well, it just says in the notes that it's, I think you said the 7th. June 24th is when construction starts.
Four weeks.
Four weeks.
Okay, so starting June 24th?
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure the public is aware so they don't go up there and get angry that they get up there and they're blocked from going in there.
Well, there's signage. And we're putting signage up, right?
Right, but I would rather prevent them from traveling there to begin with. So.
Maybe Facebook or something.
Yeah. And I think Glenn was going to try to do something about getting that out.
They posted signs at all the entrances a couple of weeks ago. It's regular visiting. Should have seen those by now.
Thank you.
Thank you. We also met last Tuesday, the 4th, immediately following the building committee. Couldn't think of the name of the committee, the building committee. And we covered three topics, the strategic plan next steps, future topics for meetings in the fall and winter for our committee, and an update on the implementation of the new accounting system. So first, we'll talk about the strategic plan next steps, which will involve defining more specifically how to implement the plan. The really, you know, it seems like we've done some really hard work. The real hard work is what is yet to come, which is the implementation part and then how we're going to measure it. So there'll be a lot of prioritizing, which actions to take first because you cannot jump at the whole thing at one time. It's just completely impossible. Identifying who will oversee the coordination of efforts and deciding how best to measure and report progress, which of course is how things get done, right? If we don't measure it, we don't know if it's happening. So we're definitely talking about that. So the district's administrative cabinet, consisting of our long fellow staff plus principals and assistant principals, will provide regular governance and oversight to this next step. The governance will begin in August at the cabinet's annual retreat and then will continue as part of the cabinet's monthly meetings during the school year. One person will be selected as the point of contact for each broad, each of the three broad priority areas. And then one point of contact will also be selected for each objective which falls under those priority areas. So I think there's three, three, and four objectives. So three, three objectives under one priority area, three objectives under another priority area, and then four. And so that's a lot of point people, which does really take this shared responsibility approach, which is the only way to handle this. So it'll certainly be beneficial for organizing and again, balancing that really hefty workload that comes with a strategic plan. There is no funding in our fiscal year 2025 budget for a dedicated strategic plan coordinator as we had with Master Abby and as the ESSER coordinator. So that's why we have such an important model of shared responsibility for this strategic plan. The business office team will, will be providing part-time support and helping to coordinate data and, excuse me, data gathering, meeting logistics and documentation. So certainly thanks to that group as well. So then topic two was looking at a, a schedule of what strategic planning and finance will cover over the course of the academic year. So we looked at specifically the annual budget reviews that are scheduled from September through January. Those will look pretty similar to what we've done this past year and in years past as well. Other topics that will involve several other reviews include the annual audit, of course. And just a reminder that we are all up to date now and the auditors are ready to, to go in the fall to, on the fiscal year '24 audit. So we can stay on top of that. There's a consideration of possible purchasing cards to eliminate low-dollar paper invoices and certainly to improve controls. There's consideration and pros and, consideration of pros and cons in terms of establishing a new capital, capital reserve in case we have, I'm not sure how, what we have left after all the ESSER funding, but I'm sure there will be things that will surprise us that, that will need to be taken care of. And it will be nice to have a reserve fund for that. And then certainly we will continue progress on getting updates on the strategic plan in that committee. So. And then our third topic- And then our third topic was the, an update on the implementation of the new accounting system. And so the news regarding that new accounting system continues to be positive. Implementation and training workshops are on schedule. Two members of the business office team have begun to provide one-to-one in-person training for all the administrative assistants who are expected to use that system most often, so that end-user training, which is really important with any new system. Tyler Technology Consultants, which is the parent company of the, the group of the software that we're implementing, will also conduct virtual training later this month for employees who will enter and approve purchase requisitions. The new system, which is exciting, will have an employee portal with self-service features. Training on that will also happen in July and August. And we are also scheduled to have our next meeting on Tuesday, September third at six P M. We don't meet in July or August. And I guess I'm, I'm going to sound like a broken record here, but I, but I had in my notes that I wanted to kind of echo what's already been said as the Chair of Strategic Planning and Finance, not just to commend, you know, Abby and Rob, but the district as a whole, for sure. I just, I just feel like we have such a sense of responsibility. We are responsible stewards of money, we're responsible stewards of our children, and I just feel really strongly about that, that we're very innovative with, with technology, and we are responsible and really, I just feel like we're really cutting edge. And so I just wanted to thank the principals, assistant principals, and all the teachers for all that they, they do, and of course, everybody along the family. Thank you. That's it, I'm done. Thanks, Ted.
Thanks, Ted. Thanks, Ted.
Well, I was absent for the last policy meeting due to illness, but I do have a number of policies for first reading that the committee did work on. So there's an update on policy number six one six zero, which is a code of ethics for all district personnel. That was based on our legal counsel's recommendations. Policy number sixty-two hundred, sexual and other unlawful harassment, updated the designated administration, pronouns, grammar included the legal reference. Policy sixty-two oh one, the criminal records check, changed the headmaster to principal. Sixty-two ten on personnel was just a grammar correction. Sixty-two eleven, recruitment and appointment, deleted the requirement of family disclosure. And policy seven six nine eight is the child nutrition and wellness. That was moved to have a brief presentation and first reading at the June meeting of the board, and you'll see that there is the report on that policy number. I'm not sure if Rob would like to take it from there.
The only thing I'll say about that is you have the basic report there, I don't want to take too much time. We're bound to seek public input on the policy and how it's going. I tried to summarize how things were going in the, in the eyes of the eighteen people who responded to our request for input. Kathy asked me, do you think that's a good response? And I said, it's the best we've ever had.
Well, you do get daily responses, at least the principals and--
We get feedback all the time, and I think--
I was just curious, how was the survey put out there to people that--
So, we sent it out, ready? It was posted on the website, it was posted on our social media push, it was posted on each school's social media push. And I think we also linked it in, like, school newsletter if we had time.
For every school.
So we did, yeah. Yep. So--
Just curious, because I have kids in four schools, and I didn't know such--
It also went to--
It went above my--
It went to every faculty and staff member too, so that we could get their input too. And I think without, because we weren't collecting emails or names, I think a lot of the input was from people that were in-house, but there were clearly some people who were out in the community. And I want to say that anywhere there was a possible improvement, I reached out to our building level leaders to say, like, okay, tell me about this. How's it going? Is there anything from your eyes we can do to improve? And I would say we got, I got wonderful and detailed and thoughtful responses from every principal on every question, and I'm confident that the policy's in a good spot. And our interaction with our food service vendor is the most critical relationship we have, principal to food service manager, and that is well-established, so I think we're continuing to improve and grow. And so you have that, and I would say that's a good policy for first reading also.
And there's the legal reference attached to that policy. And that's all I have.
Sir, need a motion to move those policies?
Don't move them.
Second.
Any questions about any of them? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
What am I going to do without you, Rob?
Just fine. Bianca's ready to go.
Do we have any unfinished business? No unfinished business, no? Any new business? No new business. So with that, I entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of consideration of contractual matters, the premature release of information regarding those subjects, which would place the board at a substantial disadvantage. We'd like to invite Rob Bliss, Ted Plomenis, Bill Olson, Pam Reed, Bianca McKean, and Glenn Scott.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?